Call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, June 18, 2015. The time is 7:00 PM. I'd ask you to please call the roll.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Matt with us this evening, Trustee Collins and Trustee Hamilton. Village manager Francis.
Here.
Village attorney Melina.
Here.
Also present Village clerk Haley.
If you please rise for the pledge.
The village alleges to be the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, infinite in principle, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who's here with us tonight, to those of you watching at home. If you are here with us and you'd like to address the board at any time, I ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your remarks from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up tonight, presentations and public comment. We have a description by Chief Weitzel about a very nice donation from Riverside Women's Charity. Chief Weitzel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. I thought it appropriate that I come, and I brought, kind of got you with me, to let the president, the trustees, and the manager know about the true partnership that happened between the Riverside Police Department and Riverside Women's Junior Charity and how our heroin overdose antidote program came about. I'm going to turn the podium over to Lieutenant Gatzik, but I'll say that this was, when the police department started to look at this program, it was Lieutenant Gatzik that came to me and asked me if he could get the program, do the research and get the program up and running as far as the police department goes. The charity was the one that funded the whole thing and they came to us. And we didn't seek them out and for, that has rarely happened in my tenure as police chief. And it has rarely happened that somebody's come and offered to fund any program that we haven't gone out and sought funding first. So I was, I thought it important that the board hear from Lieutenant Gatzik and the Junior Women's Charity. So I would ask Lieutenant Gatzik to address the board. Give us a short presentation.
Lieutenant.
For some time now, heroin's been a horrible epidemic throughout the whole Chicagoland area. And it's impacted Riverside here even. We're not immune to this. And when Chief Weitzel approached me some time ago about this Narcan program, was, I just started looking into it when the Junior Women's Club, Nancy here, came up and was kind enough to sit there and make some suggestions that they'd be willing to fund something. We ran with it, looked at different things, and lo and behold, here it is just a short time later, they managed to fund our Narcan kits here. And I'll pass this around so everybody can see it. But this Narcan kit was funded by the Junior Women's Charity. And it, each officer here on the department was able to get one of these Narcan kits. And there's a whole wide variety of things in here that I'll explain.
Pass this around.
But we wonder, everybody kind of wonders what a Narcan is and, you know, and why it's needed, okay? First of all, you know, most people picture heroin users as, in the past, that it's a bunch of people stuck in a room and it's a big little drug den and everybody's doing heroin and getting high. That ain't the case anymore. The case is nowadays, the majority of our middle-class males between the ages of 19 and 29 are using heroin. And if you really think about that age group, it's our college kids, okay? And over the past 10 years, heroin has dropped dramatically in price. You could buy it as cheaply as $5 to get a little bag. And it's gotten so popular that they've manufactured it that it increased just tenfold the supply on it. In Chicagoland area, the predominantly used drug is now heroin. And it's well surpassed methamphetamine, crack cocaine, and cocaine. Done drugs there have taken a backseat completely to heroin. Heroin is the predominant drug in the market. Today, the inner-city gangs have made it easy enough where, I don't know if you've read the papers and stuff, where there's heroin trains, where they allow these, the youth, our youth to sit there and travel into the city, have safe passage into the inner-city neighborhoods to buy their heroin, and get back out and come back this way and get right off the trains. Or they take a car and they drive into the neighborhoods and the gangs actually allow them safe passage because they're selling their product. And it's a scourge. It has become an epidemic terribly. Big thing is, is when somebody overdoses on heroin, it attaches to the receptors in your brain and it slows your breathing down and stops your breathing. And this is sadly where deaths come from and where seconds matter because where you might find a youth passed out from a heroin overdose, seconds are going to matter where, to get that person breathing again. And that's where this Narcan comes in. Narcan, in that, inside that kit, it's a simple little device to spray, nasal spray, and it sprays the Narcan into their nose. And that Narcan travels to their brain and attaches to their receptors where the opiates are shutting down the breathing, and it actually blocks it. And it gets the person breathing again and it saves their life. Again, remember, this isn't your typical drug scene where you're thinking they're in a little drug den doing drugs. These are our kids. These are everyday college kids, young people that are getting addicted to this stuff. Over the past three years, statistics right from our own fire department, Narcan was used 18 times, right here in Riverside, for various reasons. And that might not be just for heroin, but for any type of narcotic overdose. And what's nice about Narcan is you really can't mess this drug up. You could administer it and if it's not needed, it's not going to harm them. But if they are using some type of opiate or heroin, it's definitely going to help them and it could very well save their life. And that's where, again, these seconds count. As you know, in the middle of the night, chances are the police are going to beat somebody, beat the paramedics to the scene. Our paramedics have just a phenomenal response time, but when seconds matter, the officer might be on the scene 30 seconds, a minute sooner than the paramedics, and it might make the difference in the world from someone living and dying or being, having brain damage from not breathing for a period of time. So this drug is exceptional. You know, a young man told me, he's close to me, and he told me some time ago that his girlfriend had him try heroin. He said, the first time he used heroin, he fell in love with it. That's how powerful this drug is. Sadly, now, sometime later, he's been arrested three times, he's had two bouts in prison, and I know that he'd been through three addiction programs. So knowing that I was going to talk in front of everybody here, I called him yesterday and he told me that as of yesterday, he was 90 days clean. What's scary about this is statistics show that 78% of heroin users will relapse. And it takes them at least five years to be off heroin before they have a chance of succeeding. So sadly, this young man, he's 24 years old, there's probably a good chance that he will relapse again before he has the opportunity to sit there and succeed. Relapsing is the problem because they build up a tolerance to heroin, and then when they go to use again, they use that same amount, and that's what causes them to overdose. So that's where our problems come in. I do know of one death here, right here in Riverside, not that long ago from a heroin overdose, and it's very sad. So this is a great product. When the Junior Women's Charity offered this opportunity to us to sit there and fund this program and save the village money to be able to supply this to every officer on the department, how could we turn it down? And that's where Nancy Waiter comes in and she wants to say something here because I couldn't applaud her more than for what she's doing here.
I really didn't want to say anything, but I will. It's important to me, I, in 2012, I read about this drug and I was absolutely amazed that it could bring somebody back so quickly. And I remember even back in 2012 approaching the police department and asking them, have you got this program? Do you need any help? And it was pretty new. DuPage County was doing it and we weren't. And then I realized that there are so many junior women members that I'm with all the time that have very little children and there's, they're not even aware that heroin can be such an addictive drug for $5. And it's, in Riverside, I mean, the kids have a couple of bucks here and there, they want to try it, and before you know it, they're hooked. Joe Ballerine and I have personal experience of a child that our sons grew up with that overdosed on heroin, and it's such a tragedy for the family. So the really nice thing about this drug is, besides the fact that it reacts so quickly to bring somebody back, but I understand, and I might be wrong, but Narcan, the people that manufacture the drug, it's got a two-year expiration date, and if we don't use it, it's going to be fine. We just send it back to them, they will give us brand-new ones. If we do use them, we just send them the empty, they send them back to us, fully loaded, ready to go, and it's not going to cost us any more money, even though I'm sure juniors would be more than happy to sponsor this in the years to come if more money is needed to keep this program alive. And I understand from Chief Weitzel that it's, there's a law on the governor's desk that's going to mandate every single police department have this because it really was only a $1,300 donation to get our, our police department up and running. And if we save just one life, it's going to be well worth the money that we spent. Well worth it. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just in closing on that topic, Nancy's absolutely right. There is a, there is a law sitting on the governor's desk. He has not signed it. They will mandate that every law enforcement agency in the state of Illinois within the next two years deploy the Narcon, some type of Narcon device. It can be given as an IV, an injection, but most municipalities would not want that. But if he signs that, we're ahead of the game and there's no funding assigned with that, though. It'll be an unfunded mandate from the governors, from Springfield, but at least most law enforcement agencies will probably be able to afford that or find a partner with somebody. So we did a, you know, Nancy and her organization did a fantastic job, so.
And Chief Weitzel, I wanted to ask, it's my understanding also that you, some of our officers have been specially trained in recognizing the symptoms of narcotic overdose.
Yes. We, the village, two years ago, we spent training dollars to send Officer Brian Greenawalt to Drug Recognition Expert School for both DUI enforcement, driving under the influence of drugs, and just general narcotics. He has the ability to train other officers, as does Officer Navarro, Sergeant Miller, and Sergeant Pontrelli, who all went to receive what's called Train the Trainer so that they could come back, conduct the training at roll call. And they trained everybody up until, including myself. So my squad car that I have has the same kit. We, the whole department was trained and they have the ability to respond quickly. And I shared our policies with the fire chief and the fire department and our EMS districts so that they know what our protocol is when we respond. But they do, the officers can recognize certain types of drug in addition to the heroin overdose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, for the folks at home that might not know, the Riverside Junior Women's Charity is probably our preeminent philanthropic organization here in town. I, I just had an opportunity to look at their philanthropic list for this coming year. They have funded over 27 separate individuals and groups through their organization. So we're, we're very grateful to the work they do and they're an inspiration to all of us. So thank you, Nancy, on our behalf. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Mr. Ballerine, did you want to talk about our upcoming festivities now?
I could. I just wanted to read a card that I got today in the mail from a lady. "May the sun, may the sunshine on all of you for your efforts in keeping the Fourth of July festivities active for the people of Riverside. Sincerely, Patricia Pavlich." You know, you get, I, we get a lot of these little, I get a lot of these little things to say thank you, blah, 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 blah. And when I, and when we get them, I kind of, in many ways, I feel guilty because the Friends of the Fourth gets a lot of recognition for all of this. And we do do a lot of work, but it's really the hundreds of residents who help under, write the, write the event, the community groups, the Lions, the Riverside Junior Women's Club, the Garden Club, many of our businesses who sponsor and participate in the activities, our police, our auxiliary police, our explorers, many who volunteer their time, the fire department who probably presents the colors on the third and participates with all their finery on the fourth, Public Works for all the work that they do, setting up, breaking down, keeping the place clean. You go by on the Fourth of July, you'd never know the Third of July happened. It's amazing. Ronnie, Annie, Colleen, the rec. department, the rec. staff, the rec. board, they start working on this, you know, a year in advance. And finally, our village manager, who really understands the importance of these two days to our residents and does everything in her power to support us as a group and supports all the department head and all our staff. And that's really what makes the Fourth of July, the Third and the Fourth of July happen. So I thank all of you that are here and all of you that participate, so.
Can you tell us a little bit about the July 3rd concert?
July 3rd will be Libido Funk Circus. And they will, they're a, they're a cover band that plays everything from disco to So it's going to be a very, very good evening. It starts at about 6:00, so people, people know by now that they get their reserved spots. Some start at early, it's 8:00 o'clock in the morning. We'll have the Pizza Wagon there from Primo, we'll have Choo Choo there, Molly's will be there, Snow Cone Makers, we have various different food and beer will be there so you don't have to, you can just come and enjoy yourselves. And then that'll go from 7:00 till, sorry, 7:00 till 10:00, the band will play. And then in the next morning, we start off by the, by the 5K run. And then everybody winds back up at the Guthrie Park for more food and music and fun for another few hours.
So the parade starts at 8:45.
Parade starts at about 8:45.
And then the festival's at 10:00 in Guthrie Park.
Correct.
Right. So we look forward to seeing everyone at Riverside's favorite party.
Riverside's favorite party.
Can the very special guest sing the National Anthem to begin the festivities?
And who might that be?
Doug's beautiful wife, Jennifer Pollock, is going to sing the National Anthem.
Kicking off the festivities.
Yes. I did send an email out to Mr. Cornelius and to see if he would do it, but I have not heard back from him yet, so.
Thank God it's the right Pollock.
As of today, Jennifer's still on.
Yeah. You're successful with that.
So, so far, so good. Response is solidified. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, guys. Anybody else would like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports of village officers. Village president's report. I'm pleased tonight to appoint Richard Julian to the Historical Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire in 2017. We greatly appreciate his, his willingness to serve. Mr. Julian is close to our hearts. He happens to be Trustee Collins' brother, so we're very glad to have him. So I would ask for a motion and a second to appoint Richard Julian to the Historical Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollock. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Barry.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Mr. Julian is with us here this evening, and our village clerk is going to swear him in. Mr. Julian? If you could step up to the podium, please.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard Julian.
I, Richard Julian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
Of the Office of Historical Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I do need your signature.
Thank you, Mr. Julian. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
That is all I have this evening. Village manager's report.
I just have one item. I just wanted to provide a quick update with regard to electric aggregation. We entered into an agreement with Dynegy. There will be letters regarding the aggregation program mailed out tomorrow, so residents will be receiving them over the weekend into Monday with regard to whether or not residents want to opt out or opt into the program. Those that are currently opting out of the aggregation program will receive a letter with the ability of opting in and vice versa. Those that are currently participating have the opportunity to opt out. That is all I have.
Thank you very much. Next up is the approval of consent agenda. Are there any items a trustee needs to have removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Setteby.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lumsden. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. We have no departmental or commission reports, any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolution. Up this evening is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a sales agreement with Joe Rizza, Ford of North Riverside, for the purchase of a 2016 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Squad Car for an amount not to exceed $30,000. Chief Weitzel.
Mr. President, trustees, and manager, I am requesting that the department be able to purchase with funds that are specifically intended by state statute for squad car purchases for DUI and traffic enforcement. To give you a little history on this, in 2008, the governor's office passed a law that allows upon conviction of DUI offenders and some other serious traffic offenders such as fleeing and eluding, serious hit-and-runs involving injury, that the police departments can receive between $100 and $500 for every conviction. And the range is really based on whether it's a first-time, second-time offender, or the maximum $500 fine would be if we responded to an accident that required extrication and a lot of police-fire activity. A judge can find up, or can assess up to $500 upon conviction to come back to the police department. The money doesn't always come in on a stream because it doesn't happen on the arrest. The police departments only get it if the arrestee is convicted or pleads guilty. So sometimes, in some years, you'll see us get $20,000, $25,000 maybe in fine money. In other years, we might get 1,800. It kind of depends on how long the cases drag out in court or what the convictions or the pleas are. So this statute allows departments to do, buy vehicles, equipment for those vehicles, and maintenance for those vehicles for any DUI-related enforcement and traffic-related enforcement. And you can buy whatever type of vehicle you would like, marked, unmarked, specialized. My suggestion to the manager was we purchase a unmarked squad car for this specific person or, or reason that's outlined in the statute. It would be used specifically for DUI enforcement and traffic enforcement in our residential neighborhoods. It will look like a civilian car. We will put, we won't have the police hubcaps on it. It'll be civilian, it'll look, we're not even going to order it black like a squad car, we're going to order it looking like a civilian car. But when the officer hits the button, you'll be able to tell it has more lights than a Christmas tree, that we'll be able to stop you. The entire funding would come from this account. We currently have over $65,000 in there. It hasn't been used for this purpose. The account was set up before I was police chief and it wasn't even used then. So I'm hoping that the village agrees that there will not be a penny spent from the village funds, and that includes the ongoing maintenance that will go with that car. And we will comply with the state statute. As you know, the government will audit us on our use of that, and I will ensure the board that our auditing is spotless every year. So unless the manager has any other, I know she has some information on the financing if you wanted to speak to that.
Sure. Just to clarify for the board, so these funds are reported as part of our comprehensive annual financial report that we received actually at the last board meeting. It is actually under, if you look in the book, under public safety and it's restricted funds. So specifically, you can only purchase, utilize those dollars for these particular purposes. So I just wanted to make mention of that. So it's not part of our unassigned fund balance, it's restricted funds.
Any questions for the chief or the manager?
I'm just curious, can these funds be used for personnel costs?
They can be used for personnel costs for such as we running DUI roadblocks, which we're doing Friday. We could use it for that. We can use it to purchase breathalyzers, portable breathalyzers. The only personnel fund is if we're conducting sobriety road checks or checks, that type of, or we're doing saturation patrols where we would put officers out specifically. But then that car that we put out, that overtime could be charged back to this account. So those officers' overtime wouldn't even have to go on the village's general fund. The only, one of the, the biggest restriction on this account is we cannot use it to replace our squad car fleet. So it, it specifically says it has to be for the special use of traffic enforcement and DUI enforcement. But yes, we can, we can charge back some overtime to that account for DUI and traffic enforcement.
So with this vehicle, does it have any other purpose other than, is it restricted solely to the DUI and?
Traffic enforcement, yes. They will, so we, I, we're not to, we're not to deploy that unless the village declares an emergency, the vehicle's not to be used as part of regular patrol. But for example, there's a provision that says if we, if the village president declared a flooding emergency in Riverside, we can utilize the vehicle for that. So if there is a declared emergency, then we can, we can deploy it.
Well, that adds for a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ballerine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lumsden. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Next up is the village board's favorite discussion, a discussion of sidewalk paving requirements. And our director of public works is here, Mr. Bailey. I know that trustees Hamilton and trustee Collins are familiar with this, but I thought since we do have Mr. Bailey here with us tonight and since we have some new trustees, that we would just go through this. So, Mr. Bailey, if you'd just like to go through the various costs, and what we're really talking about here is the difference in cost and the suitability or desirability of either brushed concrete, Portland cement concrete, or exposed aggregate.
Good evening. I've provided an agenda history to you. I thought maybe I just kind of hit the high points of that. I'm sure you had plenty of opportunity to read it. And, and at the end, if you have any specific questions, we can take those under consideration for the inevitable next discussion of this topic. There's 47 miles of sidewalk in the village, and for the most part, over the last, I don't know the exact timeframe, but in recent history, the village has been exposed, installing exposed aggregate concrete sidewalks. Last year, the village board decided to go with Portland cement concrete, brushed con, brushed sidewalks. And that was kind of after a, an inspection of all village sidewalks. It occurred approximately a year ago. We found that there were 198,888 square feet of concrete sidewalk that met the criteria for replacement. At that time, that amount of square footage was estimated at $8 a square, $8 per square foot to total about $1.6 million to replace, if all of it was going to be replaced at one time. In addition, one of the ways we've approached sidewalk repairs through saw cutting, and this is specifically where there's vertical displacement between sidewalk squares typically at a joint, one square is above another, creates a trip hazard. That's much more economical to repair through saw cutting than replacing the entire square. In that particular case, that would be an additional $367,108 to correct those deficiencies. The last two years, the village board has budgeted $100,000 for sidewalk The last two years, the village board has budgeted $100,000 for sidewalk repair. Previous years leading up to that, $50,000 was budgeted. So the village board, I think, has recognized the significance of the challenge to repair the sidewalk by increasing the budgeted amount. The village has also participated with some surrounding communities with joint, a joint purchasing program for concrete sidewalk repair. We had a bid advertised last year. The bid was awarded to Schroeder and Schroeder. The cost per square foot for five-inch-thick Portland cement brush or broom finish concrete was $6.75 a square foot. That's a predominant thickness of residential sidewalk, which is also the predominant sidewalk we have, obviously, in residential areas. And for five-inch exposed aggregate concrete, the per-square-foot cost was $9.25. The contractor earlier this year in February notified the village that it was willing to renew the agreement from 2014 for 2015 at the 2014, 2014 prices, which I just recited. The village board did earlier this year agree to the contract renewal proposal. And at that time, engage in a discussion about the, whether or not to continue with the exposed ag, or continue with the Portland cement brush broom finish concrete or go back to the exposed aggregate. And that's kind of where we are tonight, is that discussion is continuing. And just a few other things that the village board had a few questions about options that could be added to the concrete, including color, curing the concrete with linseed oil and adding fiberglass mesh. And I provided a cost extra for each one of those two items. Further down in the agenda history, we have this breakdown of the cost comparison between the use of broom finish sidewalk or exposed aggregate at the original price that, or the original amount of square footage was found to be defective. It was in 2014, last year, it was 198,888 square feet. And at $6.78, that would have been $1.3 million for broom finish concrete. And at $9.25 for exposed aggregate, the cost would have been 1.8 million. So you can see there's the significant cost difference, especially cum, at a cumulative basis for the, those two different materials. As far as the remainder of the sidewalk after our sidewalk program last year, we have approximately $1.1 million that we would have to replace at $6.75, $6.75 per square foot, or that would be 1.6 million for exposed aggregate, a cost difference of $432,000. And then to over a five- or 10-year period, if we were to replace sidewalk with exposed aggregate, the cost would be $319,000 versus $233,000, $233,000 or a difference of about $86,000 on a five-year basis. On a 10-year basis, the cost difference would be about $42,000. And then we also have the saw cutting approach also, which would be in addition to that because these previous prices were just replacing the squares of sidewalk that are defective. So with that, the staff continues to wait for the village board direction on what type of concrete to use. The program is ready to go. I had an email today from the contractor wondering when the village, all the villages, the other participating villages also would be ready to start the project this year. And I guess with that, if you have any questions, further questions that anybody has, we can take those and either respond tonight or get back to you.
Just, just a couple more things. I know that the village manager, because one of the reasons that we had been talking about the linseed oil was, one of the problems that some folks had with the appearance of the concrete last year was its brightness of the color. And so the idea would be that the linseed oil would help darken that. And that would be 30 cents a square foot in addition.
Right. So the total cost, if you use PCC broom finish concrete, plus the linseed oil will be a total of $7.05.
$7.05. And then we'd also had an inquiry from Mr. Peiple from the preservation commission about the possibility of using colored cement. And according to Schroeder, that would be an additional $4 a square foot, which would make it substantially more expensive than even the exposed aggregate. And I know you spoke today with our, our village engineer, Mr. Galey, and he had some information about the linseed oil. Could you share that with us?
Sure. Did you want to read that, Mr. Bailey, or would you like me to?
I can, I can read the email. I think that's best.
Oh, you got the email? Okay.
Yeah. This is specifically addressing the question about the use of linseed oil. And I'm quoting the village ma, village engineer's email. Linseed oil has been used for years to seal concrete. It is less common now to do it, now due to advances in other curing and sealing compounds. It is also used less today due to the fact that it generally, is generally mixed 50/50 with kerosene or mineral spirits and is therefore flammable. It's not the best or longest-lasting product available, however, it does a good job of limiting spalling the results from excess salt during winter. Because it doesn't last very long and is recommended to reapply it every few years. The oil compound will darken the concrete at first, but it lightens up after a while, if not resealed. And the smell does linger for a while. And I can go on with, okay. That's, so that, and that reflects, I did give you a data sheet on linseed oil from the contractor, and it kind of reflects what that data sheet says.
And I was informed today by the village manager that in the past year, we have had two trip, trip incidents already on our sidewalks. So this is, you know, this is a precedent concern. So any questions from the trustees for village manager or Mr. Bailey concerning this?
Schroeder's gap last year, how did it, I mean, the sidewalks that they did replace, they all functioning there well?
They seem like they've held up, they seem like they've held up well. You know, time will tell, but you know, they're only a year old, so. Yeah, we, right, you know, right after the project is done, we, we actually, we measure the amount of sidewalk that they replaced to make sure that their billing corresponds with what they, you know, they bill us. So as far as their, the quality of their concrete seems fine. I'm not aware of any deteriorating concrete.
And then the, you have two quotes here, five-inch and seven-inch. What was the reason for the seven-inch?
Seven-inch is actually a commercial thickness. And the other thing is that these thicknesses are also provided to the other communities that are participating. So, you know, they're covering various thicknesses that these other, Riverside and/or these other communities would be interested in using.
Seven-inch something that you would, you think is considerable, I mean, would be worth considering?
I think it's required by the village code that commercial driveways are seven inches. I think that's why that's in there.
And if I might add, in speaking with the village engineer, I had asked the purpose for seven inches. He said traditionally, it's for alleys and also driveway aprons. And that's usually why they also price it out as well.
Mr. Paul, this is, Bailey, we, we had some also, we had some exposed aggregate squares replaced, I think as part of the Burling Street.
Yes.
Have you, have you noticed any, if you compare those to the brush cement, have you noticed any difference in deterioration or any kind of maintenance issues over the winter?
Not yet. The one nearest the village hall here suffered a gouge, I think, from the bobcat. It's my, my guess when they were using the bucket to clear snow. But other than that, it seems to be holding up well. And I'll say that the previous years when exposed aggregate has been used, to the extent I've seen that concrete, that also seems to be holding up well. I think the most significant thing that I am aware of as far as exposed aggregate has a lot to do with the person that's doing the washing of the cement after, you know, after it's finished. The cement rises and then it's washed off. Sometimes I think what can really affect the ultimate quality is how, if the person using the wand or the high-pressure wand was too aggressive, you know, that can affect the long-term durability. But on the other hand, it, it all looks the same. I, and we've had three contractors now installing exposed aggregate in the last five years. They all seem to do a fine job.
So apples, oranges, or in terms of maintenance, are we looking at the same longevity, same upkeep?
I think so.
Which one we pick?
I think so. And right out in front of village hall, there's exposed aggregate that was installed some years ago. I don't know. And that seems to be older, obviously, than this stuff associated with Burling Road. That seems to be in fine shape.
So it's primarily an aesthetic difference?
I think so.
So what do you have to say, gentlemen?
I'd like to revisit why the mesh. We happen to have our old trustee Foley.
He is like a moth to a flame with this conversation.
We started talking about concrete.
Former trustee Mike Foley.
Mike Foley, Selborn Road. It's great to be back at Concrete Talk. I think one of the things that people were upset about was the starkness of it. And one of the things that you have to understand about concrete is, is that if I pour a square here, it's going to take six to seven months for the square to just cure, to actually get hard. Yes, you can walk on concrete the next day. You can drive on it in five or six days. But it's not fully cured for six, seven months. A lot of people don't know that Hoover Dam was poured a long time ago. It's still curing. It is not totally 100% hard. Portland is the colorant, the natural colorant in concrete. So the stark whiteness of it will deteriorate after a while. Linseed oil, I'm not sold on it. There are other chemicals that can cure concrete and protect it against road salt. Now, you have to take into consideration that the residents that live in this town that want to protect them, walk in the winter and not slip on it, will throw salt on it. Salt loves exposed aggregate. It gets between the stones and it pops the stones out. The other thing that I would like the village, public works person is to get the ruling from ADA on the complacency of exposed aggregate as far as a smooth surface that's walkable. If you notice, we are one of very few towns at all in this area that have dabbled in exposed aggregate. Most municipalities steer away from it, from a cost standpoint. We know that we have over 3,000 squares that are insufficient, and we got to get to the finish line. We got to get these, now that we've exposed the problem, we need to get these squares replaced. I think people need to give the broom concrete just a little bit more of a chance to dull down. You also want to talk about consistency of product. If you have two trucks pulling out of a cement yard, both loaded with exposed aggregate, and they get to the job and they offload their material, there's not going to be a consistency from one truck to the next unless you stockpile the aggregate that you want at the supply, at the, at the concrete plant. They stockpile it for you. And then you use your stone material. But they can be pulling stone, exposed ag, stone from anywhere. We've heard the term swanee stone. We've heard river stone. There's a million different kinds of exposed aggregate that can be used. So I, if I know I have a problem and I have limited resources and funding, I want to get to the finish line. I think it's going with the broom concrete is the way to go. I would steer us away from going to the colorant because there also is a huge inconsistency in material delivery. I've poured a lot of different kinds of concrete. I steer away from colorant because there's no consistency from one load to the next. And when you're pouring large areas, you have to have consistency from one truck to the next. The fiber mesh is put in, fiber mesh is a relatively new product to concrete. Think of it as hair. I don't have a lot of it, but think of it as strands of white hair that are mixed into the concrete. It's added at the job site. So when the truck pulls up to the job, the operator gets out. He simply tears open a bag that's about this big, and it's full of fiberglass strands. That's dumped into the barrel and it's sped mixed into it. And they mix it at the site because they can ask for one bag, two bag, all the way up to six-bag mix. The fiber mesh interlocks in the Portland and makes the concrete strong. It also allows the concrete to move and to heave without cracking. So that's fiber mesh. It just is a strengthener in concrete. Is it needed? No. You see fiber mesh being used more in areas that vehicles will be driving upon, putting extra weight, and if there's trucks going across it. To the seven-inch pour, you would only do a seven-inch pour if you're in an area where you've got heavy vehicles. The normal residential driveway is only five inches. Aprons are seven because occasionally you'll have a heavy truck, a delivery truck or something pulling into your drive. And that's why the, the municipalities like the seven-inch pour. But even now, I'm seeing most municipalities going back to a five-inch pour even in an apron. So fiber mesh, again, road surfaces that vehicles will be on, not necessarily used in walkways too much, unless you're in an area where you know you have a lot of heaving. Heavy sand base, whatever it might be, bad drainage, you would expect fiber mesh. Fiber mesh is also more used predominantly in foundations and walls.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Appreciate it. Nice to see you again. Comments, opinions?
Well, I haven't changed my opinion from the last time I voted on this. And, you know, I would say with the brush, the brush concrete, from a cost standpoint, from a, from a wearability standpoint, I think we've already seen in the last year or six months that it's been down, that it is not as bright as it was when it first put down. I spoke to a resident last week who had quite a few cement squares put in front of his house, and I asked him what he thought about it. And he says, sidewalk, it's great. He had no problem with it. So I think we, we look at these things and we, we think there's more of a problem where we have this thought that, you know, that from a high, someone said we're supposed to have exposed aggregate, and we've been doing that since the late 1800s. And, you know, exposed aggregate came into this town in the mid-'70s, if I, if I remember my history correctly. Before that, it was brush, it was regular brush concrete that just happens to be old and dark and aged and which all the brush concrete that we put down now is, will eventually darken and age. And uniformity, this will give us more uniformity than everything, than anything. I mean, you see more exposed aggregate that is one way or another, and Mike's right, it's where you get the stone. It's also who's blowing off the, the top coat. It's an art and it's, 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 it's just, I don't think it's worth the $440,000 or $450,000 we would have to spend, and that's at today's dollars. You know, these, these dollars go up over the period, so $450 can easily be six, could be eight.
That's, that's three years of funding.
Yeah.
At the rate we're at now.
I haven't changed my mind and I.
Other comments? Mr. Pollak?
I haven't changed my mind either.
But we have changed sides, so that's.
Everybody keeps talking about the color, and I don't, I don't think the color really is. Color's part of the issue, but it's the texture too. You know, I saw some of that newer concrete that was wet, and so color-wise, it blended in just fine. But it's still completely different. It looked completely different from the exposed aggregate that's been put in since the '70s. It looked completely different from the sidewalks that were put in in the 1940s because of the texture, not the color. And the broomed concrete will never match the texture of the older sidewalks or of the exposed aggregate sidewalks. Maybe in 100 years when it wears off, I don't know, but in my lifetime, I don't think it will ever match. So that's the reason I think the exposed aggregate is better. I think when you talk about all the different types of sidewalks we have, you know, I heard that is an argument for, well, then just go ahead and use the brushed concrete because we already have a whole bunch of different types of sidewalk. I say that's an argument for using the exposed aggregate because the exposed aggregate looks so much better when it's thrown in a mix with a lot of old, different sidewalks. It just blends in better because of the texture, as well as the color, but mainly because of the texture. I've heard a lot about consistency. I don't buy that one bit. I think that we can create standards and we can demand the quality we want. We have to create a specification. We have to make sure the contractors do exactly as specified, using the exact chemical mix, the exact mixture of all the different materials that go into it. And we have to oversee their work and make sure they're doing it the way that it's specified to be done. We don't need to stockpile. make sure they're doing it the way that it's specified to be done. We don't need to stockpile rock. We can just specify what quarry it comes from. That happens all the time in the business, where you say, you know, that aggregate has to come from this quarry. You make sure that quarry has a lifetime supply, and, and any contractor can go there and get it and use that same rock. You just have to specify. So I, I, I don't buy the consistency as an argument at all. So I think the exposed aggregate is better. It'll take longer, I realize, to replace all the sidewalk pieces using that because of the additional cost, but I'd like to see us stick by that.
So we're going to ask a quarry to keep a lifetime supply of exposed aggregate for us?
It's in the ground. It's, 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 it's not keeping. It's in the ground. They mine it. It comes from the earth. And you find a quarry that has.
Then, then it becomes a deep tunnel project, and we can't get it.
That happens all the time.
And I, I can't believe that we can say that we want it to come from here and we want it from now for the, forever, and we can spec.
We'll check, we can check on that. It's, it's, we don't need to speculate on, on whether that's true or not. That's my understanding. If someone, you know, knows more than I do tells me differently, you know, but that's always been my understanding. I've seen it done before.
Let's hold on, let's hold on just a second, then I'll get to you two gentlemen. I'd like to hear from the other, the other trustees.
I guess I'll be even more one. I think, I think Mr. Piple's letter was generous and very diplomatic, as he is, but I would say that the area he references is an eyesore. We're one year into this, and I think it's an eyesore. It just happens to be across the street from me, so I see it every day. But when you see every third sidewalk that is in stark contrast to everything else that's there, it's an eyesore. Maybe it won't be in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. I don't know how many years it may take, but one year into it, it's, to me, an eyesore. So I have a problem with the brush concrete, at least the way it was applied last year.
I've taken a look at it over there on Gage Road, and then I've looked at the new sidewalk that's over there right by the Forest Street Bridge, where they did the whole thing. And again, I think there's an application for both of those in Riverside. I think that if we're taking a whole block or taking something like that, that we're going to do a large section, or the majority of them are being replaced, then that's the time that you make a change. When you have the exposed aggregate and it ends up looking like a checkerboard, I think we're doing a disservice. And I don't know how we balance that out, which neighbors get brushed and which don't. But again, I think that there's an application for both. Or if we take the downtown area and then around a certain area where we want to maintain that exposed aggregate, and then we look, we're going to have to balance something out because we can't hit the finish line, as you said, going with the expensive aggregate everywhere, at least in a timely fashion. I don't know how fast it's deteriorating. Are we gaining? Are we losing? But that's something that I'm interested in. We can only, if we're doing $100,000 a squares, do we end up next year having a bigger deficit, right? Because I mean, that has to know whether or not we're making any gains on this, right? So I'd like to take a look a little bit more about the ADA requirement. I think you bring something up to see if there is a valid advantage to either one from a slip resistance factor of both those, because that's really what we're talking about. And, and then again, I think the other thing too is, is that the one advantage to having a Portland colored concrete without any additive and any colors is that when we do grind them, as future movement happens, they're going to match more. When we grind the exposed aggregate, then we get these triangle of colors that seem to, from an aesthetical position, they solve the physical trip hazard, but now they become a, an, an eyesore, to use Mike's term, or something like that. So again, I think we need to kind of look at a holistic plan that, that gets us to the end mark. Whether or not it gets us there in five years or 10 years, I think that's kind of a subjective discussion we need to continue to have.
Mr. Ray, did you have something? Did you want to add? Did you have something, Mr. Ray?
Yes.
I'm so tired of talking about concrete.
First, I'll give you a little history lesson. I think I've given it a couple times before. In the 30s, when the sidewalks are done in Riverside, they were done in two steps. There was a base concrete poured, and in those days, there weren't such things as curing compounds. You cured them by sprinkling with water and covering with burlap. And then two or three days later, after the concrete took its initial set, they would come back and they would hard trowel in a thin layer, about that thick, of another concrete mix, which used granite as the aggregate. We have two colors of granite in our village. We have the black, and we have the amber colored aggregate. And you can still find a few markers around that says it's called granulux. And that was done by the process of hard troweling about a half to three quarters of an inch on this base slab, and then derbieing and hard troweling it. And that's what those sidewalks are. We'll never be able to match those again, because nobody's going to go through the physical effort of either hard troweling a very stiff mix of granulux or granulated, granite aggregate, very fine granite aggregate, over a base slab. So, so we've got the, still some of those reddish, and we still have some of those black, and we have places where we have the red against the black, believe it or not. You have to walk around through the parks to find them, actually. And I keep saying, take a stroll right down here along Rivers, along the river's edge to, to the Forest Preserve, and you'll see them all there. Nobody does concrete work the way me and my father did when I was a youngster, where we hand mixed the concrete off of the back of our pickup truck, and shoveled it in and derbieed it, you know, and hard trowelled it, and then waited four, five, six hours for the initial set to come, and go back and hard trowell it till you've got that ringing sound in the trowel. We have some of those sidewalks around too, that were done in the 60s and 70s probably. And before anybody thought that they had to be textured in some way, that's how we did them. And in two or three years, you would wear off by traffic and by weather. You'd wear off the cement paste that was left between the aggregate on the top surface, and they would dull down. And we have a lot of those sidewalks around. Today, everybody uses ready mixed concrete. And the ready mixed concrete comes out of a silo over here in McCook and other places. And if you use what is being called Portland cement concrete, or commonly I've heard the term used, it's all Portland cement concrete, incidentally. It's all Portland cement concrete, whether it's exposed aggregate, whether it's done in a two-step process, or whether it's hard trowelled, or whether it's broomed, it's Portland cement concrete. The aggregate that you're going to get is what comes out of the quarries over here. And in our particular area, it happens to be limestone. And that limestone is crushed to a gradation required by IDOT for that purpose. And that's what you get. The Portland cement might be, it seems to be getting whiter for some reason. I don't know why that is, but I've noticed over the last five, 10 years, that Portland cement is getting whiter. We used to have to order white Portland cement if we wanted it. Nowadays, it seems like the Portland cement that you find in the silos is pretty darn white. So that tends to be quite white, no matter how you do it. There's two ways of doing exposed aggregate. The one method is to set up a silo with a gradation of selected stone, and it could be from several quarters, from several quarries, but stone, not, not limestone, crushed limestone, but actual rock. And you decide what you want to use and the gradation that you want to use, and they set up a silo for you, and they have to actually, when the, when the concrete truck comes, it takes that out of that silo, that particular silo. Now, the average, I believe the average ready mixed truck is eight yards, 12 yards, 12 yards?
They, they could run with nine, the lawsuit, they could only run with eight, but they could hold nine yards.
Yeah, eight yards, yeah. I, I was used to eight yards when we used, when we used ready mixed concrete. So the other way to do it is by pouring your normal, out of the silo, concrete, which would be crushed limestone, whitish, and then broadcast that stone onto the surface after the concrete is reached, its original, its, its initial cure, and then hard trowelling it in, and then spraying the surface and, and washing the cement paste off of the surface. That's what we have downtown. That's the way we did it there, when we did the downtown. So there's three methods, and you can really play with this method of, of broadcasting. You can make patterns. You can use a different colored aggregate and different size aggregate, and you can do all sorts of things. So you usually, what, what you would do is you would experiment with, see what you want, do one or two squares, maybe, maybe some more, and then select how you wanted it to be, and then proceed from that going. So today, we're, the, the concrete guys are getting the concrete out of the silo, and it is what it is. The Portland cement is what it is. The aggregate is what it is. And if you want an exposed aggregate where the aggregate is stone, roundy stone, instead of broken up pieces of limestone that we get out of the quarry next to us here, it is what it is. You can select the aggregate, and there's, there's a, a company that specializes in supplying all kinds of exposed aggregates. And that's, they specialize in supplying that. And it can either be brought to the yard where it's mixed in the silo, or it could be brought to the site and broadcast and hard trowell in. The idea of a broom finishing has degenerated since it was first invented. Instead of that last hard trowelling where you would, where you'd make that, you'd make that, that trowel sing. You'd hear the ringing as you dragged it across the surface. Took a man and a half to do that kind of work. My father could do it. His kid couldn't. Okay? I never got to the point where I could make that trowel ring like my father. But that's work. That's work. And you actually have to wait a certain amount of time, depending upon the weather, how hot it is, whether you're pouring in the morning or the afternoon, how humid it is.
I, I'm.
That initial set will come, and you will have to wait until it's ready for that hard trowel. So it's a lot easier to broom it. Okay? It's just a heck of a lot easier. And when we first started doing broom finished concrete, we would hard trowell it and then broom it. Okay? Now, they don't hard trowell it so much. They just sort of squizzle it around and then broom it off and put the curing compound on it, which is not a sealer, incidentally. A curing counter, compound is designed to allow the moisture to escape from the surface of the concrete at a controlled rate so that it cures properly. But all that excess water that was put into the concrete to make it possible to place can get out and evaporate off. Okay? It's not a sealer. It's a curing compound. Okay?
Cut.
Linseed oil was the first, as I recall, the first curing compound. Okay? Boiled linseed oil was the first, to my knowledge, as I recall, what you call curing compound. So there's a whole knowledge of concrete and aggregates and placing methods that's involved in this whole thing. We've got it all. We have got it all in this village. We still have the granulux. We have concrete that was poured in hard, hard trowel, and you can see it today, done in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s, you know, and it's weathered out, you know, over the years. And we have the exposed aggregate that was done by the broadcast process after we meticulously worked with the contractor to get the appearance we wanted. I was involved in that, so I know that happened, in its central business district. We have the, the mixture, and at one time, and it may still be in the code, there was actually a mixture called for that said what the aggregate was and the gradation of that aggregate would be for that exposed aggregate concrete. Where we have exposed aggregate concrete, we should have exposed aggregate replacements. Where you have all the others broomed, it's what your minus will do. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Foley, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to make a mention to trustee Pollak. I, I've been arguing with you about consistency, and you don't think that's real, but I have 14 squares in front of my home that are exposed aggregate. The day I was there and they were pouring, and we got about eight squares in, trucks out, next truck comes, same yard. I invite you to come to my house. The first 10 looked the same. The last four are different. Same company, same yard, same, basically the same driver that poured the foundation. I mean, same trucks, everything, different look. If we're going to ask somebody to make a spec for us and to stockpile stone, your cost will go up from $9.75 big time. We are not a big enough player to even ask a yard to stockpile. We don't buy enough. They wouldn't even talk to us. So I, I think if, if, if we can stay, if you want to go exposed aggregate, come up with a spec, but try to drive the cost down any way you can, and I challenge you, it's going to be a hard, hard road. But if you want to stay with the broom concrete and you're afraid of the starkness of the whiteness, you can ask our supplier, our contractor, where he's buying his material from. There's a lot of other yards. You can get different colored concrete from Ozenga, from Elmer Stone, from Material Service. They'll pour you Portland, but it'll be slightly different shades of white or gray. And this trustee said to me, you don't like the square. You've got to give it a little time to cure. It's still white. It's still drying now. Take a saw and you cut that square in half. You look at the bottom inch of it, it's still curing. So it's not dry. You have to give it a chop. I poured a driveway four years ago on Selborn. Couple days after it cured, it was super white. Go back and look at it right now, four years later. It just looks like the normal concrete dulled finish. So concrete will dull over time. But there is a consistency with material that's coming out of the ground. There's inconsistencies everywhere. You're not going to get the same pore all the time.
And what we did last time, we did specify that we were going to use exposed aggregate around the library, around the village hall and, and in the downtown area. And we were going to use brush concrete everywhere else in the residential district. You know, you look at where you've done the saw cutting. You've saw cut old concrete. And where that saw cut is, it is brown and then it is white. So it is, it's, it's proof to you that brush concrete dulls because where you saw cut it, it turns white. And that will, again, in a few years, go down. Would you consider an eyesore? I consider fiscally irresponsible because that's, that's exact, I mean, I don't see a half a million dollars to spend on this, that, that's, it's that big of an eyesore. Nor who, nor have I had residents come up to me and tell me that. I mean, if this was that big of a deal, we would hear from a lot of people. And I have not heard from, I've heard from a couple. I'm not going to say I haven't heard from anybody, but I heard from a couple. And we've, we've affected 100 people with these squares, and I heard from a couple.
Anything else? Anything else? So, we're just talking tonight.
We'll get to talk about it together.
What I would suggest, that our next, we are not going to have a meeting on July 2nd, so our next meeting will be the, the 3rd Thursday in, in July. By that time, we will also have a financial projection from our financial, finance department concerning our capital improvement plan, because I, I have to say, from my own perspective, what I'm, what I'm hearing, and even if, if the, the other two trustees who were here, I suspect we'd still be here, I'm hearing kind of a 50-50 split. Some people prefer, and it's, it's a subjective aesthetic judgment. Some people prefer the texture and color of aggregate, some people prefer the, the texture and color of brushed cement. What, what I have a hard time with is knowing that our actuaries are telling us we're going to have to put another $200,000 in the police pensions next year. And when I hear those kind of numbers, and I'm, and I see that we're talking about $430,000 difference, it's, it's hard for me to justify that kind of expenditure over something that is, is really an aesthetic, an aesthetic choice. I also have concerns, like Trustee Lumsen has mentioned, and I, and I have heard this from several other people about the ADA compliance, so if we can, if we can find out more about that, please.
I'm agreeing on that. And you know that ADA regulations drop on uneven surfaces, and I think that's a new initiative on their part. I don't know the details of it, but I think a good example of what I would consider rough uneven surfaces would be this Swanee River gravel sidewalks on East Burlington, how they've deteriorated. That would be a rough uneven surface. But I'm not, I'm not so sure about exposed aggregate, especially as it's used here. And I can say that the city of Chicago just installed exposed aggregate throughout the new Maggie Daley Park, and does mean that they're 100% correct, but I'm relatively confident that they would install concrete that did meet with ADA requirements in a park there. But we can follow up and clarify what that rough uneven surface means.
When do you think they're going to be back to Schroeder's?
They're already emailing you to find out when we're going to do this. I mean...
Well, I'll tell them that we won't be, we won't know until after the meeting in July, I don't know the date, July 18th or something like that. But it's also, they, they want to do, they would like to do all the communities that are participating together, and I don't know that those other communities are ready to go at, at all, or either. Like last year, the Village of Riverside was ready to go way before those other communities. So, I'm, I'm sure they would, they would like to go sooner rather than later, but they mostly want to know so they can schedule.
So, the 18th is not an issue?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll be in contact with them tomorrow, and let them know that we're going to delay into next month.
And we, we can't decide the night anyway, because you have to have four votes to authorize expenditure funds, so. It will be the second meeting in July. We will finally make a decision. Yes?
Why did we just talk about this, then?
Because, because Mr. Bailey was here, and I'm one of the new trustees, have an opportunity to ask questions and be informed.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate it. Kind of a sensitive subject.
Okay, so, that was that. Moving on to new business, does anyone have any new business? I do have an announcement to make. It's a very exciting announcement. We were informed in the last week or so that Channel 11, WTTW, is going to be doing a documentary called 10 Towns That Changed America as part of a series that they've had. They've had ones on buildings and parks, and the one they're doing next is, is 10 Towns That Changed America, and they have selected Riverside as one of those towns. So, they will be here in Riverside in early July, doing some aerial videography, so if you happen to see a low-flying drone, don't be alarmed. It's, it's good old Channel 11, and Jeffrey Baer is out there at the controls, so everything is...
That's right.
And, and then they'll be back in, in mid-late July to actually do some more filming and do some interviews. And then on September 12th, Jeffrey Baer and Dan Andries, who is the producer of the series, will be back as part of our Fred event, and they'll be giving a public lecture that evening at 7:00 about the documentary and how it came to be that Riverside was chosen as one of the, as one of the 10 towns that changed America. So, we're very honored. I have, I have suggested to the village manager and to the trustees, we received the application today from PBS. There's, there's really going to be a very minimal footprint with regard to the filming, so I would suggest that we, that we authorize the waiving of our normal filming fees, application fee, because of the nature of the project. So, I think that everyone has said that they are okay with that. Yes?
That's the $500 fee that...
Yes.
I probably should revisit that too, but I would certainly support.
Yeah, well, you can really take action on it, because what's not guaranteed.
Is it because it's administrative in nature? If there's consensus of the board, am I able to then go ahead and process?
Well, are you, are you able to waive it generally without the board action?
Well, we have the, the fees that are outlined in the code.
It's an administrative procedure, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so then, yeah, you could just do it. If, if all four, then you have enough of a consensus to...
Okay.
I think one thing I'd like to add, President Salz comments, so I said, this is national PBS, even though it's WTTW filming.
Right, this will be nationwide.
It's a big deal. This is not a local deal.
No, this is a big deal.
It's exactly right.
Best advertisement we can get.
And well deserved, because we did, in fact, help change America. So, that's, any, any other new business? We do have need for an executive session this evening to consider the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees to discuss collective bargaining and to discuss probable or imminent litigation. So, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session, not to reconvene. No final action will be taken. Motion by Mr. Ballerine, second by Mr. Lumsen. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsen.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.